Sorry for the delay, everyone. Our closed session ran a little bit over. We have a... While we're waiting for the others, we do have a quorum, so let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please rise? Okay. Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Councilmember Sings.
Here.
And Councilmember Chow is not here just yet. Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
And Mayor Sharp.
Here. Okay, so we're on to ceremonial matters and presentations. If everyone's not aware, this is our city clerk's last city council meeting. However, I'm sure she's actually going to return as a member of the audience for future meetings, especially the ones that go till 4:30 a.m. And so we do have a proclamation for her upon her retirement and recognizing her dedicated service to the city of Cupertino. So if we could all... All the council could come up to the front. Okay. Grace, would you like to make a speech?
I don't have a long speech, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for this honor, and it truly has been my pleasure to work for the city of Cupertino as a city clerk. And I will miss... I will miss the people for sure. Maybe not the three A-game meetings, but thank you again for this honor.
If I'd like to give the report out from the closed session now. Public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 549-57B for the city manager. We provided an evaluation. No reportable action was taken. Conference with labor negotiators, Government Code Section 549-57.6. Agency designated representatives to be announced in open session immediately before this closed session, and the unrepresented employee was the city manager. And myself and Vice Mayor Paul were announced as the council's designated representatives, and direction was given to us. No reportable action was taken. Thank you. Okay. Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor. I do... I forgot that there were a couple of speaker cards for item number one, but I...
Oh, okay. So, we can hear them now?
Yeah, sure.
We have two speaker cards here. Rahul Vasanth, followed by Peggy Griffin. And this is for item one. Welcome, Rahul. No, this is for... I think you're speaking in oral communications, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not oral yet. That'll be next. Welcome, Rahul.
Hi, Grace. I'm gonna miss handing my comment cards to you, and I hope to see you at future meetings handing comment cards, duh, as well. We're all gonna miss your dedication and your exuberance at our council meetings, email correspondence, and all of the work that you've done. Thank you so much for supporting our city's residents, the community, and the city as a whole. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Okay. Peggy Griffin.
I wanted to thank you for all your hard work, your help, your guidance, and patience, professionalism. I can't imagine not having you as the clerk. So I want to wish you well, and thank you for everything you've done for our city.
Okay. We are on to oral communications. These are things that are not on the agenda. So I have a number of cards. You each get three minutes. We have... And please line up, so we can do this quickly. We have Charlene Lee, followed by Pamela Hershey, followed by Jim Moore. Welcome, Charlene. Is Charlene Lee here?
My name is Charlene Lee. I lived Cupertino for 20 years. But I call... I call mayor and the city council mayor... Uh, city council member, but they... They never answer back, so I want to know why, because I got, yeah, a master degree. My husband have, yeah, a PhD degree in computer science. I work for nonprofit organization. Uh, my husband is VP of Samsung. So I don't know why October 11th, I stood at the front curb side of Montevideo High for 10 minutes only, and the police had called me, and he lied. I wear a black dress, but that day I wear white dress. And I contacted the mayor, Steve Jar, for four months, and he rejected to answer the phone, and he told me he contacted the captain, but he rejected to say anything. And Assemblymember Ken San Jude said, "We can put this into agenda, or even we can have Captain Richard Urina to come to this city council meeting," but they all reject to do anything for us. And also on October... October 28th, the fire police come, I get out into my Saya and use a fire gun pointing at me, and I hide it into my bathroom, because they keep doing this. And I call another lady I know from Democratic Club, and she come and ask them what happened, and they reject to say anything. I get out, and they reject to say anything, and they... And they... I think this city discriminate Asian Americans, so especially it's a city clerk, Grace, told me I can email this city council member to put into agenda, or even find a video or photo on the October 11th, 2017. If I transpass, there must be someone witness or photo or video, but they... More than two year, they cannot find any video. And even the October 28th case, what happened? I didn't get any video, and I get a police report. One year later, they put me in jail, one year. So I want to know what's going on and why this city council member reject to answer, and I contacted the city manager, and he always busy, always in meeting, and never answer any email, never answer any phone call. And this say, uh, the mail should be elected each November, but this time is December 3rd. How come they didn't let us know? Also, Steve Jar... Steve Jar already be a mayor this year, so how come he can be next year? Especially, I see the video, that day only have four person elect he as a mayor. So if they keep reject to answer the phone call and reject to answer email, reject police agenda also, they can do something else. Contact the captain, invite him to come here.
Okay. Please finish up your way over time.
Okay.
Pamela Hershey, followed by Jim Moore.
Can we please ask the city attorney to clarify whether any of this is within our jurisdiction? Because she has been here the second time to speak. Maybe clarify.
If the arrest was in your city, I think it's within your jurisdiction.
I didn't hear you.
Sorry. If the alleged arrest was within your city, I think it's within your jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you. Pamela Hershey, followed by Jim Moore, followed by Ignatius Sting.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and city staff. I'm giving up, with your permission, my three minutes for Jim Moore, who has some slides to share that will take longer than his allotted three-minute time.
All right, go.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Moore. I've lived here in Cupertino for over 40 years. Again, it's a pleasure to be here in front of you and have an opportunity to speak about something that you've already received an email from a group of us in regards to what's taking place at Velco as far as them not honoring the easements that were granted by the city of Cupertino. And what I wanted to do is go through some of the visuals that were part of that email that was sent yesterday morning, alerting the city council, city manager, and the city attorney on what Velco is doing with the bridge and also with the Loop Road. And both of those are easements that were granted by the city. First of all, this is an artistic visualization of the bridge over North Wolf Road. The artist did a wonderful job. It's a beautiful bridge. I think it rivals the appearance of our pedestrian bridge, which I think is really a landmark for Cupertino. When I first saw this, and this has been out there for about a year, I thought, "That's a beautiful bridge for residents, for us, for the people that live here in Cupertino." I was shocked to learn that that's not our bridge anymore. That's for the residents that will be living at the Velco Town Center, the one that's being built under the auspices of SB 35. That was retail for our use, going from Macy's over to JCPenney. That's now going to be for residential use, their residents, and not for us. We'll get to see that when we go under that bridge when we're traveling on North Wolf Road. The point is for this presentation here is that the Velco folks don't have permission to use that bridge as residential. It was retail as far as the easement, and that's why it stayed retail for about 25 years when we traveled from Macy's over to JCPenney. Here's an architect drawing of the actual bridge from an architect's standpoint, and it shows what easements are allocated to that bridge. And if you look at the easement that was granted, and this is easements are granted by the city, especially for this one, because this bridge actually goes over a city-owned street. It's a public street. It's owned by the city. And for anyone to build, you or I, or anyone to build something over a street, we have to get an easement. And the thing about this particular easement that was granted by the city years and years ago, I think it was like 1975, is it says that that easement grants you the right to use this bridge for retail uses, not for residential. And that's key. And this is the actual easement that was recorded. All the easements are recorded with the Santa Clara County Clerk Recorder, and they're dated and stamped and have all the signatures of the people that made that agreement. And that's still in existence today. That easement was never removed. It was never changed. It's the easement that exists today for that bridge. Okay. Here's another architect drawing from Velco, and it shows that... Shows the bridge, and there's four levels, but two of them are kinda there because of the 15-foot regulation that says if you have a ceiling that's over 15 feet high, you can count another level, and you can count that square footage, and you get to put that into the total. And it's very interesting, but they only have two usable levels, but they're gonna count four as residential space. And they have a table that's part of the application package. Again, been there for years and years. I don't know if you can read the actual table, but underneath it talks about the fact that that residential use, their residents' use, not ours, is about 73,000... 78,000 square feet. Very large amount. One and three-quarters acres of space there that will be for their residents. At this point in time, have no idea if we'll even get to walk through, or go see it, or whatever. They may have an open house. But the easement that was granted by the city doesn't allow them to use it for residential, and that's what they plan to use it for. And that needs to be stopped. And as I understand it, it's something that the city has to take action on and not something that the citizens can do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for keeping to the six minutes. Now we have Ignatius Sting, followed by Anjali Kauzer, followed by Kitty Moore. Welcome, Ignatius.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. I'm Ignatius Sting, 42 years resident in Cupertino. This is just a follow-up to Jim's presentation regarding this easement thing. So first point, I want to just remind everyone, a number of residents have sent emails and letters to the council and city manager and city attorneys regarding this matter. Tonight, I want to address the process in general. That's the second point. The city need establish or revise process for managing city easements right-of-way and public property. Because the Velco's case is very obvious, we have a broken or lack of process for management easement. The property... Public property owned by the city is very valuable, not only in terms of dollars. For example, in the Velco case, property involved tens of millions being given away, but also the public property need to be kept in record for public use. Once it's lost forever, then we never get it back, and for a small city like this, it's very important to manage this and keep it in the process before we start review any application for development waters for residential or for commercial. The second thing is also going through the process and develop the letters, we discover also... We also lack of the process for vacating all this right-of-way and easement in the city. So tonight, we have another item on the agenda. That's just an example. When this reviewed, what's the value and how they being determined? How could we just decide something on the wing at the city council meeting, you know, instantly? There's a lack of careful evaluation. That's an important thing. The last point is important, you know, we know we have a problem. We need to address it. The important things legally, we need to establish documentation, notification, and get this thing done on paper. Otherwise, we will be in disadvantaged position to defend the laws right-of-way and easement in the Velco case. And there are a couple other things coming up, like Canyonville and other projects all involve easement problems. In the case of Marina, easement is not owned by the city, but by another property. But because of the easement have never been vacated by the owner, so that property never been developed over a couple years, but the city get blamed for not to develop any housing. We all get blamed. The city was under attack by housing advocates and the news media. Okay? So I just want to remind the city council about this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ignatius. Anjali Kauzer, followed by Kitty Moore, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Anjali.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Anjali Kauzer with the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to come here and invite you and everybody in the audience and everybody watching at home to the grand opening and ribbon cutting that's happening tomorrow for the Sleep Number store in our store. And just... It's a significant store because it's their 600th store in this country. So I thought it was kind of interesting that they opened the 600th store in our city. So it'll be really good if you all can come and participate in the ribbon cutting. And also, I wanted to wish you all a very happy holiday and hope you have a wonderful holiday season with your family and friends. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Anjali. Next, we have Kitty Moore, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Kitty.
Good evening, city council. I'm representing myself only. I sent you an email this week, and I'm also speaking about the Velco easements. The roadway easement issue, I'd like to clarify this. It was in the initial court submittal June 25th, 2018, and the entire 132-page book was incorporated by reference in October of 2018, complete with maps and the pertinent streets and highway code. I would like you to address the following regarding the Velco Town Center SB 35 project. While the issues are in the lawsuit, there is a point asserting that the final plan set could not have been approved for different reasons, as I'm going to demonstrate. The existing roadway easements which encircled the former TGI Fridays and Alexanders... So here's Alexanders, TGI Fridays. Were granted to the city of Cupertino from Velco in 1975 and adopted by City Council Resolution 3974. They had to be vacated by a new city council resolution in order for the final project alignment to legally conform with the conditions of the site. The roadway easements were not vacated by the city in the alternative plan, which had been only shown in a conceptual form in the March 27th, 2018 submittal. So this is a conceptual plan where they show a curved building at Alexanders, also at TGI Fridays, and a smaller couple of buildings. Notice that there's no way to get to the underground parking, no ramps. So it would have had to be formally completed, this plan, and if it met the requirements of SB 35, that alternative would have needed to be approved, and not the set the city and property owner claimed to be approved. The Velco property owner then acknowledged that the roadway easements existed in their March 27th plan submittal and provided an alternative alignment. And there is a note on this plan which says, "In the event the city of Cupertino finds and determines it is not in the public interest to process and approve the vacation, relocation and rededication of the east and west side roadway, and public utility easements which connect Wolf Road to the perimeter road in the proposed configuration identified on the sheet, an alternative site and easement plan are included on Sheets P 0202A and P 0307A." Under the California Streets and Highway Code Section 8320 and 24 regarding vacations of roadways, it states that the legislative body will notice and hold a hearing, make findings, and those findings need to demonstrate that it is unnecessary for the present or prospective public use, and that the legislative body is adopting a resolution vacating the street, highway, or public service easement. The city of Cupertino never vacated the easements, yet accepted a set of plans and approved a set of plans for Velco Town Center SB 35, which as of the September 21st, 2018 approval, did not show the alignment of the buildings per Plan 0202A. In fact, there was no final 0202A plan in the final set. And they reference on their tentative map that there would be an alternative plan, and they never turned it in. So for the city, the question is, will the city of Cupertino continue to allow development to proceed on a project which has neither a lawfully approved tentative subdivision map nor plans to develop lands fully under the legal ownership of the property owner? How is the city going to resolve this dilemma? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kitty. Madam City Attorney, I mean, is this something we should be putting on a future agenda to discuss, this?
These items are raised in the pending litigation challenging the Velco SB 35 project approval, and the city has taken no position in that litigation and will not be commending on pending litigation.
Okay. I mean, regardless of what happens with that litigation, though, the issue could still exist.
The court will issue a ruling, and then we'll know the scope of that.
Regardless of court ruling, questioning is, should... Would... For any project, this does not apply for any specific project. For any project, before it proceed to demolition construction, should the city make sure all the easement involved in that project is properly recorded and vacated, or if it needs to be changed, it has to be changed and record the new easement?
And staff can respond to council about that.
Okay.
So will we... The staff will respond? Could we schedule a study session on the proper process?
And the time for setting new agenda items are at the end of the agenda?
Okay. Yeah. We will set it then, and I would be in favor of that as well. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city council. Grace, just let me congratulate you on your... Well, I mean, we hate to lose you, but we really enjoy having you. And as said before, I can't imagine not having you there. So thank you so much for all your hard work. Then again, okay, going on the before-me giants, the shoulders of giants. January 2020 is coming up, and the specter of SB 50 is going to rise again like Darth Vader. That bill was sort of like tabled and put into the two-year time zone, like I believe it was April, but I don't think the bill is dead. I'm sure that the author and all of his friends will bring the bill back again. And I think that we need to be mindful of the fact of what SB 50 is trying to do. And it is trying to do what HB 2001 is doing in Oregon, which means that you can have duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes on any residential lot in the state of Oregon. And I mean, any residential lot, any city. And that is what SB 35 will do... I'm sorry, SB 50 will do to California. So what some of... You know, we have been plagued with these housing bills for the last three or four years. The previous governor signed SB 35. We are living the drama and consequences. It is like soap opera land, and it is taking over our city. We are living the drama. I just can't wait until SB 50 gets signed by the governor, and we can live the drama for that one. So what I'm gonna start asking is, how did the housing bills start? Will there be more housing bills next year? Where is the funding for these bills coming from? Who is writing these bills? Will we have any warning of any new bills coming? The Oregon bill, HB 2001, is very similar to SB 330. Why is this? Were these bills written by the same people? Do we have the same people in California writing these housing bills, writing them in Oregon, writing them in Seattle, writing them in Austin, Texas? Is CASA attached to Oregon also? CASA is one of the founding groups that's rolled out these housing bills. Is CASA attached to Seattle and Austin also? And what were the CASA people doing in New York City one year ago? What were they learning in their secret meeting? I'd like to know that. We have been plagued with their bills, so now we get to ask for info. We have been plagued with their bills, so now we get to ask for information and get answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Carol Gorska. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul, City Staff, City Attorney. I think it's important to distinguish between office uses that service the public directly and are classified as general commercial and office uses that are dedicated to private enterprise and/or commit a fraction of the business facility to providing goods or services to the general public. In Valco, in the Resolution 19110 enacted in September of 2019, the City Council set development parameters for Valco Shopping District, and it included no office use, but it included at minimum 4,000 square feet of general commercial. And this includes, so when we say no office, what it meant was no big enterprises not serving the public directly. But you still can have offices because it's zoned CG. And what you can have under CG is, in our municipal code, that so long as 25% or less of the area is used, you can have professional, general, administrative, business offices, business services such as advertising bureaus, credit reporting, accounting, and consulting agencies, communications equipment buildings. The other kind that serve directly to the public, banks, financial institutions, insurance agencies, real estate agencies, travel agencies, photography, and similar studios, these are still under CG and could be used. So, when the public says, "We don't want office," it means we don't want these massive offices where you have tens of thousands of employees coming in at once, all working and then leaving our city. We want office in a retail situation. And that's how it's zoned right now, and we like it to stay that way. So, no office means no light industrial zoning, ML, no planned industrial zone, MP, no office/ planned office, OA/OP, no mega corporations, no private enterprise companies that do not serve the public. We need services. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Carol Gorska, followed by Liliana Crabtree. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I'm Rhoda. I'm here to talk about Lehigh Goings On, which is a cement plant and quarry in our own backyard. This Thursday, there's going to be a doubleheader at Santa Clara County with two meetings talking about Lehigh. One thing that's of interest is that Lehigh's attorney is going, is filing an intent, intent appeal for what the county is doing to the state of California, to the State Mining and Geology Board. So, I thought that was kind of interesting. There's a lot more that I could go on for hours, but I'm not going to do that. I do have a call back to action for you guys. EPA just filed a, just did a consent decree, and it's over 100 pages. It affects a number of Lehigh's cement plants in the entire nation. And I don't think that they're going far enough for the one that's in our backyard. So, this is the press release. And I just did a quick table of what's going on in Lehigh, Cupertino, and Tehachp, and Reading, those are the three plants in the state of California. As you can see, sulfur is really, really big in our own backyard. In fact, they are the number two producer of sulfur in the entire state of California across all industries, accounting for 13% of sulfur in the state of California. NOx is also, you know, about 50% higher than Lehigh Tehachp. We've got a lot of particular matter. VOCs is really high. They're one of the top payers for nonattainment pollutants in the state of California, paying CARB $750,000 for the privilege of polluting those with those VOCs. And of course, we've got hydrochloric acid at 26,000 pounds per year. And there's more. Okay, so I just wanted to show you this table that I was able to pull up from the, it's a mapping tool that CARB has for all sorts of pollutants. And here we have, this is Lehigh, all right? It's right here. It accounts for 12.7% of sulfur in the state of California. And, you know, I tell people it's number two, and now I think that this table, this pie chart is pretty telling. This, by the way, is Phillip 66 on the other side of the bay, which is, you know, just a nose ahead at 13.4%. So, this is one, a couple of things that the consent decree is doing that I'd like you to look at. Here they have these rules about what they're going to do with sulfur for all these different plants. Guess what? All kilns except for Cupertino kiln, okay? They've got a whole bunch of pages dedicated to what they're going to do with sulfur with Cupertino kiln, and I can't figure it out. It's not very easy to understand. They're very clear about what the parameters are for all these other plants in the U.S., but not Cupertino's. Other thing is, with respect to the nitrogen dioxides, and again, those are the two things primarily that are being addressed by this consent decree, is if you see, this is Tehachp, which is another plant in California, they're allowing 1.5 pounds per ton of NOx, for ton of clinker. Clinker is sort of a predecessor to cement, but just let's say it's per ton of cement. And here we have Cupertino's at 2.0. So, in other words, Cupertino is going to be allowed to pollute 33% more per ton of product, and that concerns me. But the other thing that concerns me is really about talking about pollution per person. And this is not what they're talking about. They're not talking about health. They're talking about how much pollution are they allowed per pound? And I think there's an issue with that, too. So, I hope that you can find somebody to review the consent decree. The clock is running out. I probably by the first of the year, so I hope you can get on it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. Next, Carol Gorska, Liliana Crabtree, Lisa Warren. Welcome, Carol.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager, and City Clerk, Carol Gorska, Cupertino resident. I've been out and about around the city more lately, and everywhere I go, and also in emails, people are asking questions about the status of the Valco property redevelopment. They want to know where things stand, what they can hope for, and what to expect. I can tell them about the Valco Town Center, also known as SB 35 Project litigation, but other than being aware that our city manager is talking to the Valco property owner about alternatives to the SB 35 plan, I have no idea what to say, what those alternatives might be. As a result, I've been asking questions myself, to council members, the mayor, and people who've spoken to council members, the mayor, or our city manager. What I've discovered is that even our city council members, mayor, and city manager have differing things to say regarding what the mandate for the city manager to negotiate actually entails, as well as the amount of housing, retail, and office they favor or think that is being negotiated. So, I'd like to suggest that once the SB 35 lawsuit decision has been handed down, which is expected to be before the end of this year, city council should communicate to the public as much as it can about where things stand with Valco. It would be nice, also be nice to have regular updates posted as news items on the city website. Especially because we have no local newspaper, the city needs to err on the side of overcommunicating on items of great interest to residents, which the last two elections have certainly shown the Valco project to be. I would also encourage the city to conduct a residence survey to find out what the public is willing to bear at Valco. Better to find out before plans are solidified, an idea that might have eliminated much grief in the past. I think it's worth spending money for an independently run phone survey, or whatever method is likely to get the most accurate snapshot of people's thoughts. On another note, I'd like to remind everyone that you have two more days to give your feedback or ask questions about the draft environmental impact report for the proposed Oaks development, also known as Westport Cupertino. Send these to johnmartir@giannm@cupidino.org by 5:00 PM this Thursday, December 19. And speaking of the Oaks Development Project, I'd like to say, what is proposed reminds me of how worthless our general plan is. This proposal includes one building, well, anyway, if you're interested in what happened at the Oaks, there will be a hearing at the city council meeting on January 16. Thank you, Carol Gorska.
Thank you, Carol. Liliana Crabtree, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Coop Rez. Welcome, Liliana.
Good evening, council and staff, and congratulations, and thank you to our city clerk. Thank you very much, Grace. I'm wearing two hats, and I will do my very best to speak quickly. So, right now, I'm wearing my library commission hat, so I've got my library card here to show, to indicate that. I sent, on behalf of the library commission, on December 5, a letter of ideas or suggestions that the library commission has about how to improve the user experience in just coming and going from our library and our civic center. We know, first of all, we thank you very much for moving forward with the expansion of the library. We're all very excited about that, but we know it's going to come with some pain points regarding what to do with parking, both in the staging and then afterwards when we're even more popular than we are today. So, I just wanted to highlight that letter. I know you get a lot of communication, and we have actually six items that we're offering as suggestions to you to really encourage people to use alternative forms of transit to come to the civic center area. And then maybe some other things we could do would just think about a little bit longer term about maybe finally establishing a passenger drop-off and pickup point that's established. And maybe we're also, this is an action that we're working on right now, is maybe to reimagine how we do book drop-offs as well. So, just a high-level highlight, we have six items. Our first item is encourage people to use alternative forms of transportation, of course, including our VIA, including our bus service for those of us, for those people who that is convenient for them, walking and riding your bike wherever possible. One thing I've done, and I posted this on Nextdoor, and I will share my very casual findings with you, and that is the bikes. We know that there have been bike thefts. I've done a couple of casual audits of those bicycles, and I've found that on a couple of occasions, as many as half or more than half the bikes are either not locked or they're not locked securely, and some very creative non-locking happening. I mean, like wrapping around handlebars and all kinds of things, but it's not actually locking the bike. So, there's maybe an opportunity for some public education, particularly for our young people. You know, a lot of things as parents, we don't actually have to teach, but maybe we really do need to teach how to lock your bike. And also, just encouraging people to use areas near the library, but not actually in the parking lot, for doing drop-off and parking, like parking in our neighborhoods, you know, Pacifica, Whitney, Sassoon, Farallon, Clay Street, all those are close. I realize I'm out of time. So, my second one, just very quickly, very quickly, we just have a few other items, and that is, if we could please look at overflow parking, maybe at Eaton School, that would be maybe some kind of cooperative effort with the city, and CUSD, passenger loading, I already mentioned, and to recognize library field as a treasured recreational facility, and please drop the name field and call it a park. My last thing was just to let everyone know that VTA has new transit service. There are good transit apps available to learn how to use the transit service. And you can get Clipper cards. If you don't have one, you can get one at Walgreens. It's super easy to use the Clipper card and much more convenient. And also, of course, use Cupertino VIA. Thank you, and I'm sorry I went over time.
No, thank you, Liliana. And would point out, if anyone uses the 81 bus, that will be discontinued. That goes from Cupertino to the Santa Clara train station. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Coop Rez. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So many topics, so little time. Thankfully, many of my comments have already been made by others tonight, but I want to add another thank you to Grace, and I'm sure the cheering in the crowd with your cohorts was not because they're happy to see you go, but because they're happy to see you free. So, Bollinger fatality last week. If you're not aware of it, a gentleman was hit by a car and later died at the hospital or on the way. I've learned that the Wilson, some Wilson area residents have been attempting to take, get action taken on Bollinger. It's been a problem for many, many months. And I feel and hear their frustration. I need to speak with them and get more details of who they've actually have communicated with and what they've communicated and where it has gone, because they have not gotten any traction on trying to make this a safer place to be for pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobiles. It's crazy. I mean, I drive that road, portions of it, and it doesn't matter what time of day, what time of year, people are crazy, and they make assumptions. And those are the people, in my opinion, that oftentimes are getting other people killed. So, please, if you know anything about this group that's been trying to communicate with you and San Jose and the sheriff's office, it would be great if you could get back to And it reminds me of the teen who spoke so effectively a few meetings ago about problems and possible, and possible solutions. This teen gave possible solutions to the problem with the bike lanes on Tantow near Apple. So, I'm wondering if anything, I think someone spoke to him after the meeting, and I'm wondering if anything came of that, and if he's gotten any traction on his concerns, which should be all of our concerns. The August 20 meeting, I provided a survey said book to each of you. It was my attempt to remind you of workshop, feedback, and city commissioned survey from 2014, 15, related to what residents want as far as development, what they're looking for, and it's throughout the city. This is not singled out at Valco, it's everywhere. But I beg you, actually beg you, to look into that again and to remind yourselves, or if you weren't here, to make yourself educated on what these results were. And even though people talked for me, I still ran out of time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get some updates on what she asked? Do we know which Wilson Park neighborhood has reached out? We don't know?
I got an email from Lisa earlier, but I don't, I haven't heard anything from Wilson.
So, can we ask the sheriff? Roger know something?
I do have a question into Captain Urina about the incident that happened at Wonderlake in Bollinger. I am a little confused because Wilson Park is a good distance away from that area.
It's a separate effort, I think. She's saying a group of residents near Wilson Park is starting some initiative to make that area safer, separate from the incident.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. Separate from...
So, we don't know, okay.
Okay, well, what about Bollinger and Wonderlake?
The only information I've gotten is just from what I've done through a website search. From what I read, it was an 84-year-old male, 6:00 PM, December 12, crossing Bollinger outside of a crosswalk. I don't have any other details other than that.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe one last comment. If we checked to see about a block leader at Wilson Park, he might be able to shed some light.
I have the name for you, but I will...
Okay, you can provide it to the city clerk. Thank you.
So, can we possibly do some pedestrian education? Because I understand...
Well, we can put that on the agenda. Yeah, on the, we bring that up during the agenda.
And one other question she raised was, there was a team proposed a solution for Tantow. Do we have any, did we contact them, do something, or...
Well, you want to, I'm not sure, but that is not part of the oral, so can you bring that up during...
But we can get updates, we can give updates on these things.
I would propose you get through oral communication first.
Yeah, let's get through oral, and then...
To be respectful for the audience.
That can be on the future agenda items, which I have a long list of as well. Last is Coop Rez. Welcome, Mr. Rez.
Thank you, council members and staff, for your...
for your hard work and many years of service. Fortunately, my neighbors have already spoken to these points very eloquently. I want to thank city manager and council member Paul for responding quickly to one of my questions about the process for negotiating with Valco and ensuring me that the subcommittee, Scharf, and Paul are not ongoing involved in this, that it is something carried on by the city manager. So thank you for clarifying that. People spoke already about office versus retail. I just put up one. My neighbor suggested several opportunities there. I'll point out number 19, you know, dance studios, art studios, gymnasiums. And 27, you know, there's, these are things that take up a lot of room. It could take up space under the CG zoning criteria. Okay, so again, thanks for your help. Happy holidays.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else wish to speak during oral? It's not required that you fill out a card. We appreciate it. If there's anyone else that wants to speak, welcome.
I have filled out a card. It was for agenda item 10.
Oh, yeah, we're not there yet. Yeah, that will come up later. Okay, we are on to reports by council and staff, and this is only for committee assignments. So, let's start with council member Sinks in his new seat.
Thank you. The Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board met last week, and we had a robust discussion about taking allotments of energy from PG&E because we're approaching the point where community choice energy agencies have formed like ours and have taken effectively half, roughly half the load away from PG&E. So they have, yeah, there are some decisions to be made about whether or not we basically are reallocating power that they're already generating, and the forms and types. We also have had a number of discussions about what's happening with the PG&E situation, the dissatisfaction of our residents at the, at the blackouts that we've had, the scheduled blackouts, and the momentum toward having PG&E perhaps become a publicly-owned agency or co-op in some form. And so, the governor's decision Friday is pretty, is a big deal. He was, by many parties, expected to sign on to the agreement between the parties, and he did not. Where, whether that, we think that creates an opening for the legislature, and we believe there will be bills in a couple of different forms introduced. One that would basically create a public agency, another that would create a public co-op. And so, yeah, that was an exciting discussion. I talked last time about the Air District's settlement along with EPA and a number of other states on cement plants, and the information specific to what's going on in Cupertino was specifically negotiated by Air District staff. So the rest of the parties were happy with the stock agreement, but the Air District held out for a better method, and that's why, for those interested in the audience, the test-and-set method documented in Appendix C, EPA experts and our local experts believe will give us a better, lower emissions rate than other plants are getting after all is said and done. So, I thought I'd just let, because there was a member of the public that talked about this, so thank you.
Okay, council member Chow.
So we have a legislative review committee meeting on the 5th of December with the mayor. We are the subcommittee. We reviewed the, revised the legislative platform for next year, and it will be put on the council agenda in January for approval.
Is that it? Okay, Vice Mayor Paul.
I believe we had an environmental review committee meeting on the 5th. Yes, I recall, we did. So, we were talking about the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and so that will be moving forward under a mitigated negative declaration recommendation from the ERC. And Councilmember Chow and I have met a couple of times with, with our city manager, as well as Katie Nomura from our staff, to talk about our upcoming agenda item, which is now scheduled for January, regarding how to improve our council commissions' communications. And we're making a lot of really good progress on it. I'm looking forward to getting that back and being able to help interface with our community, as well as with our commissions and city staff with regard to how to kind of make the process of gathering public input a lot more, a lot more clear, a lot more uniform, and hopefully more effective. But we're having a series of conversations and working sessions on that. I think that we should be able to get done with our draft of the recommendations with another, another session between now and either the first or second meeting in January. Thanks.
One thing to add, I think through this process, we also find out we have currently a commissioner's handbook that has not ever been approved by any of the previous city council. So we are going to, next year, after we finish the subcommittee recommendation, we would see whether to merge into that handbook or maybe have a new handbook that's more practical. Yeah, because the current one is too long, which may be too hard to implement. So we will be working with the city manager on that.
And I want to just express how appreciative we are of all the comments from the public as well. Our staff has done a tremendous job of integrating all the comments from the public that came about as a result of the initial session we had at city council here. And we took a primary document with all of the comments from our commission members, as well as members of the public, as well as committee members. And I think we're going to come up with a very cohesive set of recommendations that will make the process quite exemplary in terms of gathering that input and being able to have successful communications with our public. Thanks.
Council member Willie.
So on December 10th, I attended the planning commission meeting about the general plan amendment annual update to see what their concerns and their ideas are.
That it, okay. I won't do the legislative review committee again. The only thing I have, I had my monthly meeting with commissioners. This is a meeting where one commissioner from each commission meets with the mayor. Not every commission always sends someone, unfortunately. But some, Leona Crabtree mentioned the library issues, and that was also brought up there, especially with bikes and locking bikes. And I've been a proponent, proponent of getting some kind of more secure bike parking there, because I think that's key to getting people to be willing to ride their bikes. We need to eliminate any excuse for not using your bike. The Fine Arts Commission talked about their progress in coming up with artistic items for, when we do visit other cities, having something good to give them as a gift, because right now, giving them a Cupertino shopping bag and all, or blanket is not really cutting it, in my opinion. And they're also talking about a Cupertino store where residents could buy Cupertino branded items if they were interested. I don't believe Tick Commission was at that meeting. However, a big event happened last Friday that affects many people in this room. And outside in the parking lot, the AT&amp;T cell has finally turned on. So if you haven't had any AT&amp;T coverage in this area since 2007, when the iPhone was released, you have it now, which is great news. We've been trying to get that turned on for quite a while. And that's all I have, so we can be on to the consent calendar. And I have two cards that are pulling item number five, but we could have a motion on the other items.
I'll move items three, four, and six from the consent calendar.
Great.
Second?
Okay, we cannot vote with our lights because they're not rearranged for the new seating. So we need to have a...
All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed, abstained, of motion carries unanimously.
So, item five. I have two speaker cards here. Well, do we have a staff report on item five? It's listed here, so. Welcome, Chad.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I don't have a presentation today, but we do have the staff report. Before you is a notice of intent to vacate portions of existing easements that are currently over the forum property out on Cristo Rey Drive. The vacations that are associated with these easements, one of them with respect to the public utility easements, is mainly due to relocation of existing fire hydrants due to comments from the fire department. The fire department has requested certain spacing guidelines for those fire hydrants. The city has been working with the developer and the fire department to relocate those fire hydrants where requested by the fire department. With the relocation of those fire hydrants, new easements have been recorded already. And when the fire hydrants are officially moved out of the old easements, those portions of the easements are being requested to be vacated by the developer. With respect to the emergency vehicle access easement, there was a realignment of an onsite private road due to the memory care facility, and we are requesting to vacate a portion of the existing emergency vehicle access easement and to shift it over to realign with the new road. And that's basically what is before you today.
Okay, before we bring it to council, I have two comment cards, one from Peggy Griffin and one from Kitty Moore. Welcome, Peggy.
This is quick. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, staff. My question is to all of you. This is a procedure to handle easements, and yet, at Valco, they weren't, there was no procedure. And looking in this procedure, the project was already approved, kind of went all the way down before the easement approval happens. So when you have something where the development relies on a road, it seems like the easement vacating or negotiating for funds should occur before the approval of the project, because if it doesn't happen, the approval doesn't happen, the product, project shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Kitty Moore.
Good evening, city council. I'm representing myself only, and I will not digress onto the Valco project unless you want to talk about it. The emergency access easement vacation, I find this educational, informative, timely, and it looks very competently done. And in this vacation, you have a segment of roadway along Via Esplendor, which will be realigned to accommodate street improvements. The existing easement spans over the private streets within the subject property and grants to the city the right of emergency ingress and egress over these areas. The applicant submitted a request to vacate the affected portion, and they asked that you record a new emergency access easement. In order to ensure a clean title is conveyed, staff recommends vacating the affected portions of the existing easement and concurrently recording the new easement. The actions for the vacation of the subject easements are that city council will consider adopting a resolution with the intent to vacate a portion of an emergency access easement, which declares its intention to vacate the subject easement, sets a public hearing to adopt said vacations, directs the city clerk to post a certified copy of the resolutions along the line of said property, and to publish a certified copy of the resolutions in the manner prescribed by law. And that law would be in the Public Streets and Highways Code. And then, in the end of January, city council will conduct a public hearing to consider the two resolutions to adopt the two said vacations, which vacates the subject easements. If anyone would like to have this process contrasted with what went on with Valco, I would be glad to do that. So, at issue is the fact that you would need to hold hearings, make findings, and adopt a resolution in order to vacate and create, dedicate, a new easement. I hope you understand how that process is supposed to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question for the city attorney and for planning. When someone submits a project and the plans are approved, but they haven't gotten easements yet, what happens if the city decides, oh, we have no interest in granting those easements?
So I think for branch purposes, we should keep this specific to this project. So if you have a question about the process that occurred here or how this project would move forward, the city engineer could address that.
Yeah, we can hold it to, we can keep it to this project. This is for the forum, and they submitted their plans, and we approved them. So why wouldn't they have done the easements at the same time or in advance? Did they not know what would be required at that time?
So at that time, with respect to the emergency vehicle access easement, there's no necessity from a city standpoint to go ahead and vacate that easement unless they actually request it. And in this case, as they proceeded down the process of the project, they decided that with the realignment of the road, they wanted clean title, and so they requested that we vacate the portion of the emergency vehicle access easement that's outside of the road alignment. With respect to the fire hydrants, the, during the review process, the fire department requested that some fire hydrants be relocated. Instead of going and recording new easements and vacating existing easements, we wanted to make sure that when the fire hydrants were constructed, that they were being constructed in their final location. A lot of times when you're in the field, there will be conditions where you can't put something exactly where you thought it was going to be on the plan because there's something else in the way, potentially something underground. So we were proceeding along those lines. However, when we worked with the water department, they had requested that we construct those facilities up front, and they wanted to make sure that those are going to be constructed within a granted easement. So we did proceed with recording that easement beforehand, constructing those facilities. And now that those facilities are constructed, we're requesting that the existing easements where the old fire hydrants were located be vacated.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So, just to clarify, so these easements were not in the original approval. The original approval project proposal didn't request this easement. Otherwise, if the original project proposal had requested a change in easement, that would have been approved with the project approval. Is that how usually it happens? So this just comes later?
Typically, with respect to grant of easements, where an applicant will grant to the city an easement, which is what's happening with some of these, that usually happens anytime before final occupancy. If there's something that we require, like with respect to a right-of-way dedication, we'll typically require that before we issue building permits. With respect to, you know, again, waterline easements, when it comes down to the final location of that easement, a lot of times we'll request that easement adjustments be done at that point in time. With respect to vacations, this is typically something that's initiated by the applicant themselves. We're not necessarily, necessarily looking to vacate city easements unless the applicant requests it and there is a reasonable reason to do so. And in this case, having...
So this is for, in order to ensure a clean title, right? So usually, we don't ensure the title is clean. We would allow a project to go through even though there is no clear easement recording, recording of the easement. You are saying that this is requested by the project applicant. The city usually doesn't require recording of easement. So we don't require...
We do require recognition of easements. We don't necessarily require vacation of easements unless there is a necessity for it, such as in the emergency vehicle access easement here.
Okay, so if, when the city approve a project, usually we will require that the easement associated with the project should be recorded, right?
That is correct. If there's a public utility or a public roadway that is, you know, on a property, you know, like with respect to this one, we have water lines. We typically try and get that, those items prior to issuance of building permits.
Okay. And that the recorded document looks like the one that's in the attachment. Okay. So another question I have is the what, the San Jose Water Company approval letter. So this is good to understand that, okay, the easement they are requesting, it needs the water company approval for the vacation or the change of the easement because they need new easement. And they have conditions for this approval. The conditions are, one, any existing water facilities are relocated from these easements. Two, provided that the remainder of the public service easement remains for public utilities. And three, and four, and there are like five or six different conditions of approval. So my question is, this is in their letter? Once we approve this change in easement, who will be enforcing these condition? What document will record these conditions of approval? And what final document would ensure and validate that these conditions are met? So that their approval, the conditions of approval from water company is met?
So these are fairly standard construction processes here. We don't typically vacate an easement until the facilities that are located in it have been relocated out. That's standard practice for pretty much any easement that we work on here. You know, with their other conditions, they want to make sure that a new easement's been recorded, as can be seen from the staff report and the attachments, that easement has already been recorded. I mean, staff is here, and myself personally, I verify that each of these are done prior to recording the vacation.
So this would be done by city staff maybe before the issuance of some permit? Or...
Before, before vacating this easement.
Before vacating the easement.
These items are addressed.
And this also include, like, the cost of any work required to alleviate the conflict has to be paid by the property owner. So that's also standard that would be enforced, right?
These requirements are imposed on developments, so the property owner is responsible for that, yes.
Okay. And additionally, the water company also required the recording of the new public utility easement prior to construction of new water facility. So this is standard that recording of the new easement should be done before the construction happens.
That's the request by the water department. And we recorded a new easement back in November. They're currently working to finalize the relocation of these fire hydrants as we speak. And we anticipate this work to be done in early January of next year.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? If not, when someone moves on?
Just so I'm really clear, this is essentially after, after the fire, Santa Clara County Fire looked at this. They really were interested in making some changes. Is that what drove this?
With respect to the fire hydrants, they wanted some changes with respect to spacing so that the fire hydrants more closely match their latest spacing guidelines.
So, so basically, this is, this is driven by a fire department request?
For the most part, yes.
All right, thank you. I'll move this item.
Great. I'll second.
Well...
Oh, sorry.
So my comment, so there's two aspects. One's the fire hydrants, one's the emergency vehicle access. The fire hydrants don't seem to be all that concerning in the sense of a developer putting in new fire hydrants at his own cost, at his own risk, that we then have the right to say, no, we, we don't want to give up the easements for the existing ones. So, okay, I'm more concerned about the emergency vehicle access, which is considered a road, and that it's been brought to our attention that there is a road and highway code and a process that should be followed. And so while we'll probably move on this one tonight, I would really like to have Public Works get back to us with what their process is and are they in fact meeting the requirements of that roads and highway code? It kind of sounds to me like it's a much more casual process. If, if a developer is going to bring a project to the city, I feel the requirements have to be agreed to first, not approving a process, a project, and then saying, okay, now let's talk about how we're going to move the easements for emergency vehicle access.
These are, these are private roads, aren't they?
These are private roads.
But it's an easement that belongs to the city.
It is a, it's an emergency vehicle access easement that belongs to the public and public services.
Good.
In this case, the change is pretty minimal. But then it's just interesting to see, even with very minimal change, they want to go through this formal process to vacate and change and record.
So I should, I should make it known that the Streets and Highways Code is a state code, a state law, and Public Works and the city and staff are following that to the T. It's not a casual process. It is prescribed, and we are following that process. And we're here today to follow that.
And we need approval from all the agencies involved when we change any of these easements, right?
We typically reach out to anybody who has an interest, and in this case, the fire department, you know, with respect to the fire hydrants, to make sure that the spacing is theirs. Also, the, the water department, because they're the ones who provide the services. We typically reach out to interested parties to ensure that they don't have an issue with this.
Would they ever have an issue maybe because of slope, because of some strange geography?
You know, the item's been moved and seconded.
Okay.
So can we just vote on this? A voice vote, not the lights. All in favor?
Ayes.
Oh, go ahead, Grace.
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Noes. Abstain. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Wow, okay. We are on to the second reading of ordinances. This is the second reading of municipal code amendments to chapter 19.80 to clarify development standards in the planned development. P zoning districts, application number MCA 2019005. Applicant, City of Cupertino. Location in P zoning districts located citywide. Adoption of the third addendum to the 2014 general plan, final EIR, and finding the actions are not a project under and exempt from SEQA. Ah, okay. Okay, can we have a staff report on this?
Council considered the, held a hearing and considered the first reading of this ordinance. At our last city council meeting, the staff report includes the changes that was, that were directed by a council at that hearing in the final ordinance language. And this is the, the second reading.
Okay, I have, do have one speaker card on this item. Jennifer Griffin, welcome.
You know, Mayor, I may have gotten my items mixed up, but I'll just make a point here.
Okay.
I'm going to say, again, with things that have happened recently, we should not do anything to make projects go more quickly because of SEQA. I'm a firm believer that the longer that projects take, the longer they're hashed out by parties that are involved, the longer that the ER environmental impact is looked at and any types of SEQA, that we need to remember that. And I'm just going, that's my statement for this. In anything that we do, because of things that have happened with the housing bills and stuff, the REACH code, we need to make sure that we are not hurried into surrendering things that are going to cause more problems later. Environmental impact reports need to take their time. And I don't care anymore about people saying that things need to be rushed. I am so tired of having things coming down from the state saying that we need to, what is that word, fast? I don't know, I forgot what the word is. Making something go more quickly. I am so tired of that. As far as I'm concerned, if you're going to have anything that's of any worth, that's going to last in California, the more people that talk about it and examine it, the better. And I, I'm sorry, I feel completely different than I did. Because of the housing bills, they have so corrupted and foreshadowed everything in my state. Everything in my city now is involved with the stupid housing bills, and it's going to get worse. So it is time to push back and say, no, we will not do that. We are the people of California, and we say what happens in our state, not some select group in Sacramento and in Oregon and in Austin and in other places. We take control back in our state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Is there any discussion of the second reading? If not...
Are you ready for the second reading?
What?
Are you ready for the second reading?
Yes.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 19-2191, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Cupertino adopting the third addendum to the 2014 general plan, final EIR, and amendments to chapter 19.80, planned development, P zones of the Cupertino Municipal Code to clarify development standards in P zones.
I move that ordinance number 19-2191 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Okay, I'll second.
Ayes.
Aye.
Noes. Abstain. Motion carries unanimously.
I move that ordinance number 19-2191 be enacted.
Second.
Ayes.
Aye.
Noes. Abstain. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, okay. We are on to item eight. This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance to amend the municipal code, chapter 13.08, parkland dedication and fee. And chapter 18.24, dedications and reservations to clarify parkland dedication and in lieu fee requirements, adoption of the fourth addendum to the 2014 general plan, final EIR, and finding the actions are not a project under and exempt from SEQA. Are there any comments before the city clerk conducts the second reading?
Can I try to move?
You have one speaker card.
Oh.
Wait, first...
You have one speaker card.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's correct, okay. Jennifer Griffin.
Thought you were going to read it first. Oh, well, I'll continue on in my tirade against awful housing bills. Okay, parkland, SB 50, SB 35, SB 330, and HB 2001 in dear Oregon are all trying to put more people into small space, and they are all using our current parkland. There are areas in Cupertino and in parts of the state, and I'm assuming in Oregon too, that are, there is not enough parkland now. We're supposed to share our precious parkland with all the new people? Okay, yeah, it's, we have new people coming in. But if we don't buy more parkland, make more parks, we are defeating the purpose of even having parkland. And I am sorry, the authors of these horrendous housing bills never once mention parkland. All it is is build, baby, build. And you would think that some of these people that have written these housing bills, because they represent areas and cities in California, that they would be concerned about their constituents and their parkland. But not once in all of these housing bills, and I, I've read them over and over again, do they talk about new parkland? No, it's the developers need to be able to build as quickly and cheaply as possible. So I'm going to say again, the people of the state want parkland. And it's, if you're going to pack in more people in Oregon and California, those people need to have parkland. So yes, it is parkland, pushback. You want more housing in California? You want more housing in Oregon and in Portland where there is a lot of housing already that is affordable? And you push these bills through? You have, you can't have it both ways. So what's happened now, because the housing bills have been pumped out and passed, is that the developers have to provide parkland. That is what the laws of the state is. You can't get away with it. If you're going to be stuffing fourplexes in on R1 lots where they are four feet apart? Yes, I heard that. That is true in Oregon. Triplexes and duplexes will be four feet apart on an R1 lot. You're going to need more parkland. Parkland's on the ground, not over Wolf Overpass, and parkland's that are owned by the city.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so are we...
So can I try and move?
First, we have to conduct the second reading, though.
So I move that...
Wait.
I'll conduct the second reading and then I move.
Right.
Learning that. This is the second reading of ordinance number 19-2192, in ordinance of the city council of the City of Cupertino adopting the fourth addendum to the 2014, oh, is that right? Yeah, general plan, final EIR, and amendments to chapter 13.08 and chapter 18.24 of the municipal code to clarify standards for parkland dedications and fees in lieu thereof.
Okay. I move that ordinance number 19-2192 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
I'll second.
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Noes.
No.
One no, sinks. Abstain. And the motion carries with sinks, voting no.
And then I move that ordinance number 19-2192 be enacted.
I second.
Ayes.
Aye.
Noes.
No.
One no, sinks, abstain. Motion carries with sinks, voting no.
Okay, we are on to public hearings. Item nine, consideration of an amended and restated agreement for the lease of the Cupertino municipal water system with San Jose Water Company, finding that the action is not a project under and exempt from SEQA. Okay, so can we have the public hearing? Director Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. The topic of this public hearing is the amended and restated lease of the Cupertino Municipal Water System. The parties of the lease are the City of Cupertino and San Jose Water Company. We do have a representative from San Jose Water Company, John Tang. He's Vice President of Regulatory Affairs and Government Relations. He is in the audience. There have been two desk items that have been prepared for this item. One is a, related to attachment C, which is the amended and restated lease. It is the signature page from San Jose Water Company, just indicating that they have... It is the signature page from San Jose Water Company, just indicating that they have agreed and signed on, on this amended and restated lease. And the second one is an updated Attachment D, which is, it was the notice and the correspondence log. We've had some additional correspondence since the, the publishing of the, of the staff report, and so we just updated what comment was received and what responses were given. So that was a desk item that you have.
Can we put this on the overhead projector so the public know, and this will be posted on this agenda, the city agenda page later?
Um, yes.
So at least they have some visual, in case they want to look up later, just...
Yeah, I mean, it will be posted with the agenda. But it, at... Okay, all right, so I'll, but I'll go ahead and continue. Okay. All right, so the, the next slide in the presentation is the service area map, indicating who provides water to Cupertino residences and businesses. So this was an attachment to the staff report, but I thought for reference, it's good to go over it. There are approximately 4,500 service connections within the Cupertino Municipal Water System that is leased to San Jose Water Company. The system covers an area of about 3.7 square miles, and so it's the area that's in purple, you know, here, here on, here on the map. You know, the, the total area of the city is a little over 11 square miles, so it's, it's about a, a third of the area of the city. Includes nearly 60 miles of water mains, two wells, three storage tanks, and a pumping station. As the leassee of this municipal system, San Jose Water Company is responsible for all operations, including repair, maintenance, operation, customer service, billing, emergency service, and water quality testing. The municipal system was originally operated by the city back, back in the, around the year when the Montevista area was annexed into the city, which I estimated was around the mid 1960s. And so the, the city had been operating it through that time. And a small percentage of the system that includes water mains date back even into the early 1900s in the system. The next slide, we'll give a timeline of the, of the lease, of the current lease. All right. So you, you can see just from left to right when the lease started. The lease for the municipal system began in October of 97, following a competitive process and has a duration of 25 years. The current lease allowed the city to conduct a thorough inspection of the system, including but not limited to field inspections, maintenance records and reports, customer complaints, capital improvement installation, schedules and plans, in order to assess the condition of the municipal system. A thorough inspection of this type started in early 2016 and was completed in late 2016. And so you, you can, you can see where these occurred in, in, in the life of the lease and, and then where we are today in December. The next slide provides an overview of the issues experienced with the current lease. So, you know, the, the current lease was in 97, and, and how it defined maintenance and repair was just by customary utility practice. And also, so that, that was a, an issue just because of the generality of that statement, and then also what the city's role has been in, in the rate-setting process. So in the next slide, I'll get into these issues in a little bit more detail. So these are, these are things that are right out of, right out of the, of the lease relative to customary utility practices. As early as 2014, there were concerns with the amount of capital expenditures that were being completed on the municipal system. The late 2016 inspection findings concluded that more should be done by San Jose Water Company to maintain the system to the customary utility practices. The term customary utility practices is a direct reference from the original lease and is the only reference of maintenance effort specified. For a long-lived asset such as a water system, where components may last 75 to 100 years, it is difficult to determine what assets on average, on average should be replaced within a duration of a 25-year lease. With the completion of the municipal system inspection in late 2016, and the development of the asset management plan earlier this year, along with a lengthy negotiation process with San Jose Water Company, that is how staff and San Jose Water Company have arrived at a defined capital expenditure effort to be completed before the lease expires in October of '22. Specifics of the amended and restated lease will be in the slides that follow. And the next slide will discuss how water rates and charges are currently determined in the existing lease. So this slide relates to just the rate-setting process in the existing lease. The process for setting rates under the current lease has not worked well in practice. Prior to 2016, we believed that San Jose Water Company did increase rates for municipal customers at levels that matched their private system without seeking city approval. And beginning in 2016, San Jose Water Company sought approval of various rate increases from the city, again designed to match their private system rates. The city requested information to show the municipal system was being maintained, as, as well as San Jose Water, as well as the San Jose Water Company private system, to support the requested rate adjustments, but this information was never received. Upon completion of the municipal system inspection, negotiations began with San Jose Water Company to clarify what level of capital expenditure was needed to maintain the system to customary utility practices and to simplify the rate-setting process. Customers of San Jose Water Company's own water system experienced rate increases in 2017, 18, and 19 of approximately 3.8%, 4.2%, and 4.5% respectively in those three years. But because the parties were negotiating lease changes, those being the city and San Jose Water Company, the municipal customer rates have not changed since 2016, except for pass-through charges for wholesale water costs and electricity. As a result, municipal customer rates are lower than, than the private system that is being operated by San Jose Water Company. In the next slide, we'll, I'll transition from the issues of the current lease and begin discussing the proposed terms of the amended lease. So in the amended and restated lease, San Jose Water Company is committing to a $5 million of capital expenditures by the end of the lease term, which is October of '22. The, the $5 million as a requirement of this amended lease, and if authorized by the City Council, will be provided to, to the city shortly after the lease is executed. San Jose Water Company will be required to coordinate with the city which improvements are to be completed, and reimbursement to San Jose Water Company will occur as satisfactory work is completed. The goal is to have all $5 million expended by the end of the lease term in October of '22, and sets up the city for better options after '22, when the lease expires. If the funds are not used by San Jose Water Company for these improvements, all unused funds will remain the property of the city. The amended lease agreement, if authorized, will no longer require the city to independently regulate rates. Instead, the city will use the CPUC, which is the California Public Utility Commission Review Process, as a proxy for its own review, and allow the rates authorized by the CPUC on San Jose Water Company's own system in Cupertino to establish a regulatory cap or maximum that San Jose Water Company can charge to customers connected to the Cupertino Municipal System. This change will simplify the procedure for San Jose Water Company to set rates, while still ensuring that the water rates imposed by San Jose Water Company remain just, reasonable, and non-discriminatory. It is also good to note that the public review process for the CPUC and the Public Advocate Office is a very involved and complicated process that is difficult to replicate at our level. This is likely why the original agreement referenced the rulings of the CPUC as a, as a consideration when considering rate, rate requests of the past. If the City Council authorizes this amended lease, and as rates for the customers of the Cupertino system have been low compared to customers of the system owned by San Jose Water Company, it is expected that San Jose Water Company will increase rates approximately 13.8% immediately. That is for the typical residential customer. This amount of increase would be consistent with the rates authorized by the CPUC and in place on San Jose Water Company's own system in Cupertino. I will note that the CPUC does levy a 1.23% charge on tariffed systems, which is what the San Jose private system is. That 1.23% would not be charged on our system. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be exactly at parity, it would be at parity less 1.23%. San Jose Water Company is not going to, is not seeking a retroactive rate change, so the municipal system customers will get to keep the cost savings that they have enjoyed since 2016. Some customers have been interested in, in refunds from San Jose Water Company due to, due in part to the CPUC ruling to resolve overbilling for this issue, and as was noted in the staff report, in June 2019, customers of the municipal system did receive a refund for the time period of June 11 through December of 2016. An additional refund to customers during the time period of November 97 to May 2011 will be made by San Jose Water Company, and it's just that the timing and the, and the amount of the second refund are not known at this time. But the amended lease does require any type of surcharges or, or refunds, sur credits to go to the customers. So getting near the end of this presentation, with only two more slides remaining, the next slide shows a listing of projects that could be completed if this amended lease So, you know, as I'm, as I was describing the system in the beginning, we do have the one pump station, it's on Mann, Mann Street, that's in the Montevista area, and you can see some of the other things. And these are consistent with our asset management plan. But these improvements are subject to change, and they have been discussed with San Jose Water Company. In closing, you know, we've been working on this for quite a few years now, and I am happy with how the negotiations have wrapped up, and I do think that the, that the amended lease produces a good result for the system and the customers. So this concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions. And the next slide is just a summary of what the recommended actions are. So thank you.
Okay. Before we go to public comment, I have one question. Because the customers of the municipally-owned system have been paying lower rates than customers of the privately-owned system, did San Jose Water build that into the request, requests for rate increases to achieve their rate of return that they're allowed to, that the CPUC authorizes? I know they're allowed to make a certain amount of money, so I just wonder, because these rates were held artificially low for the system we owned, did the ratepayers of their own system end up paying more?
Well, our, our system is, is, is a non-tariff system, which would not be, you know, any, any revenues or expenses as a result of that system would, should not play a role in how they set the rates in their tariff system, so I, you know...
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. Before we move to public comment, I only have one card left, why don't we finish this? John Enos, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. I'm really surprised that I'm the only person here. I can assure you, in 1997, I was one of many who was adamantly opposed to this leasing of the water company. At that time, by the way, I have the letters you sent out in 1997 with all the data, Roger, if you haven't got it. The situation was that for 38 years, the city had been running what was previously the Montevista Water Company, and doing it at a considerable cheaper rate than the other two companies. It was consuming a one and a half people of the staff to do that. Somehow it got very annoying that despite these lower rates, they had built up virtually two years' worth of revenue in reserve, and the city just couldn't stand the fact that they couldn't touch it, because it had to be used for the water company to benefit those who were served by it. However, when they made the lease, the city was able to grab that reserve and use it for something else. So my comments really are, I think Roger's been congratulated in perhaps using our rates and the withholding of, of increases as a lever to make sure that the San Jose Water Company has in fact spent the proper amount of money in putting the system in the right state it should be. I regret that my rates will subsequently go up, and I'm very nervous about the fact that, once you've given this just to the CPUC, that we won't get back the control that I think is much better to achieve locally. But I understand the position that we're in, and I think probably we'll have to pay a little more money for our water, but I do congratulate Roger on this, on this negotiation. But going forward in 2022, I really hope that we reconsider operating our water company in a fashion that is almost certainly going to be cheaper than the private sector operating it. If you, from data I have read, municipally-owned utilities deliver their utilities, be it water or power, at about 8% lower cost, lower to the residents than commercial activities, and we could do it. And as a small water company, we could also benefit from any grants that you can get to, for capital improvements and what have you. So please, I hope you, some of you are here in five years' time. I hope I'm here, too. We'll have a good discussion. Thank you, Roger.
Okay, thank you. So that's the only card I have on this, so we can bring it back to council for discussion?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Rod.
So I guess I took the dais here at the end of 2011, and yeah, we begin this story in 2014, so I'm not going to review everything Roger said, but I'll, I'll give you a little color. We've had as many closed sessions on this as God knows, some develop, big development project in town, right? Or so it seems, over the years. We, we found out in about 2014 that ratepayers, who had long been paying PUC authorized rates, and that rate allocation was granted by the PUC to include regular maintenance of the system, about 1% a year, I believe, Roger? About 1% a year?
That had been the rate increases in the past?
The PUC had allocated toward regular maintenance of the system.
Oh, well, yeah, the general rule of thumb is 1% of the...
Right. And so the PUC had gra... So essentially, our ratepayers were paying for this, but we, we compared maintenance records from what we had from our data that we're now collecting. We have a lot of data about when our streets get ripped up, and we saw that it sure looked to us that San Jose Water was investing a heck of a lot more in their own system than in the city's lease system. And we, you know, it sounded a little bit like, frankly, PG&E to us, and we said, hey, wait a minute, and we called them on it. And we negotiated, and we negotiated, and finally, we determined that we really get, had to get an independent assessment of the assets in the system. Because frankly, city staff didn't really have good records of what had been done, and we didn't really know everything that had been done over time. So we went out and conducted that independent assessment by experts. So now we have a better position from which to negotiate. I will tell you, as one of the people in this, as a customer of the lease system, and as somebody who's long served now with Stephen on the subcommittee, we were presented with lots of offers over time, and we frankly think that, I certainly think publicly, that I'm, I'm happy to be able to talk about this long-term effort, and I think we finally, at long last, have a fair deal. And the reason it's important is this. We do, in 2022, or actually prior to that, right, we'll have to queue up a decision, we are going to have an opportunity again to think about what we want to do with that system that we own. And options could include leasing it to San Jose Water, or leasing it to Cupertino, Cal Water, or Sunnyvale also has a municipal water system. Any of those entities could do it if we choose not to, right? But without making a deal to get the capital we need to make sure the system's properly maintained, we'd be shortchanging ourselves as the owners of the system that need to ensure that it has the kind of operational maintenance it has. And yes, we have, John, we have been getting a break all these years, but I want you to know, the city has invested some of our common resources in really strengthening our position here. So when we go do the next deal, and my guess is, we're gonna have to start that fairly soon if we want to reach agreement by 2022, these things take forever. You know, it's important for us to get a fresh start with San Jose Water, get a much better, stronger, clearer, crisper contract, now that we know what the system, that we have an idea about the system market value, and we know what the, the assets we have in the ground and the state of those assets. ground and the state of those assets, and are determined to keep the database up to date. So I wanted to just present some color for the benefit of folks who are like, what the heck? So that's what we're, that's what we're about tonight, after, what, five years, I guess. So I'd like to thank San Jose Water for negotiating with us in good faith. I think we finally reached an agreement that works for everybody.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Sinks, and I served on that subcommittee. I think I've been on that since I've been on the council, and it has taken a lot of time, and there were a lot of offers and counteroffers. And we will see in 2022 what we do, but for now, I think this is the best we can hope for. Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Councilmember Sinks, for the good, the explanation. I think, I don't know much about this, but I know the two councilmembers and staff has worked on this for a long time and really got us a much better deal and got the San Jose Water Company to provide $5 million for maintenance for the system. However, I think for residents who are not following the process, we should still, are we going to prepare some FAQ? For example, I think this will be on the meeting record. There are emails from people, here is one. Since it appears that it's going to result in increased water bills, which are already ridiculous high, I'd like to object, object my strong objection, something wrong with the wording. But, so I think this will be a common question from many people. Could you repeat again? I think this attachment also includes a response from the staff about, for each of these questions, right? Could you answer again? Are the water rates currently in this area ridiculous high? Or they have actually been kept low since 2016, right?
Yes, they, yeah, they have been lower than, by about the 13.8%. That's where it is now. It started off at 3.83% lower in 2018, 4.22%, and it just has escalated up to where that total delta now is to 13.8%. But now when, you know, if San Jose Water does determine that rate, the rate as compared to say Cow Water is going to be very, very close.
So the rate, the 13.2% that they, people are going to see is actually lower in case we have, they have been, we have been increasing the rate. That would have been 13.8% and over the past, since 2016. But now, the deal you guys have worked out is not retroactive, so no one would need to pay any higher fee for the past three years.
That's correct. Nothing is retroactive.
Yeah, so it's actually a very good deal for the residents. Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
Right, and I think, you know, we talked about the whole retroactive thing, and because people base their usage maybe on what it would cost, it would not be really fair to go back and try to collect these rate increases retroactively. So, yeah, that's why that was negotiated. So, Councilmember Paul. Councilmember Willie, anything?
Just one question. So if the residents are 13% below, is that going to be an instantaneous 13% increase for them, or is it gradual?
As I understand, it'll occur right away. Yeah, so it will not be gradual, from what I've been told from San Jose Water Company.
And so I would share Councilman Chow's concern that residents could likely be very shocked, such that I would think that we need several notifications. I mean, it could go in their bills, letting them know that on their April or May bill, they will see a noticeable increase, and one notification in one bill may capture 60 or 70% of the residents' attention, but there's still 30, 40% that didn't notice it and threw it away. So a second notification at least, a couple months before the actual rate increase happens.
Yeah, I understand, because our notice for this hearing went out around November 5th and had this information in it, and we have it on our, on the webpage, and we'll be uploading all these documents up onto that webpage as well. I did talk to San Jose Water in terms of their billing cycle, because they bill every two months, and so there will be a bill at the end of December. And so that'll have seven weeks of old rates, it'll be prorated, and then one week of the new rates, and then there'll be another bill that happens at the end of February. But I will work with San Jose Water Company in terms of how they notice in this, in the bill that they'll get at the end of December for the bill in February.
Yeah, because if they, from what you just said, if they don't get a notice in December, they're going to be shocked in February with a 13% increase, and they didn't previously, of course, they'll put a notice in and say, hey, you'll notice your bill just went up. Well, thanks for letting us know in advance, so...
Yeah, I'll understand. I'll request that of them.
Could we have maybe an FAQ on the website using language that's easier to understand? I think Roger's explanation is easier to understand than...
We do have an FAQ up there now, but, and if we get questions that come from the public, we'll keep it updated with the questions that we receive. All right.
I think the blessing about the timing here, frankly, is, you know, we're in a season where, I was at a workshop recently where people are talking about putting in barrels and cisterns, right, to store rainwater, but whether you're doing that or not, right, we are in the rainy season, so even if this notice doesn't happen right away, there's a lot of water consumption in landscaping, which occurs during those warmer months. So, you know, water use obviously goes up a lot, and we're in the low season now for water consumption, I believe.
That's a good point. Yeah.
So I think I would complement what I previously said, that, so if it's not a, as large as I would expect, 13%, but if it's low to start with, 13% of a small amount is still not much, then a notification in the summer months or leading up to the summer months that they're going to see a 13% increase over their previous month's bill in those higher usage months, again, alerting them, or there'll probably be quite a few phone calls.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. It is the responsibility of, it will be San Jose's responsibility to do that type of noticing and to field those types of calls in the future.
All right, one more question. So this gentleman asked whether it is cheaper to operate ourselves? I know you guys have explored many options. So is it going to be cheaper if we operate ourselves or join other municipals?
That's not been determined yet.
So you didn't assess that option, but you will be.
We will be.
Right, that'll be a separate agenda item when we...
That's correct.
Decide what to do with that system, lease it or operate it ourselves in the future. There's a lot of options there. Okay, if there's nothing else, okay, sure, go.
Trying to minimize the questions, but, so what happens with regard to the rate increase process if the lessor changes, or if it becomes us? Does that still get followed with regard to the subsequent operator of the pipes? So if Cupertino is operating the Montevista pipes and a rate increase comes up, Cupertino then controls whether the CPUC is requested to approve a rate increase, is that correct?
Well, yeah, well, it's our system, and it'll be, however we define the new lease to be.
Under that hypothetical, right? Well, we wouldn't be leasing it. Under my hypothetical, we would be operating it ourselves.
That's right. Then there's a whole other process that applies to that.
So then, what we're doing tonight then goes ahead and applies to whoever is the operator of the pipes in the future, correct?
This only takes us to the end of the current lease term, which is October of '22.
Okay, so the rate, the subsequent rate increases are now going to be directly handled by the CPUC up until the end of 2022?
That's correct. I mean, that'll be the maximum limit.
Okay. And then with regard to whether Cupertino then becomes the regulatory authority over rate increases, then we're at a clean slate come November 2022, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'll move this item.
I'll second.
Also, I forgot to appreciate staff. Roger, I know you've been on this for a long, long time.
No, thank you.
Ayes.
Aye.
Noes. Abstain. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, so why don't we take a break before item 10? We've been going for more than two hours now, so it's exactly nine o'clock. Let's reconvene at 10 after 9:00. So 10 minutes.